No. My, my, not my issue, but I think with the memorandum of understanding with what's been going on, I'm going to recommend that council now pass everything they want to do along with the C E O. So we have a resolution where we're all kind of in partnership with this. It's just basically an update. They talked about Christmas in the village, the gala, May long weekend. I'm not going to go into everything because you've all read it. Their Taylor Park design, I know they want to put trees along the back. We're not desirous of it in the back alley, along the back alley there because there's power lines and so forth there. So I know they planted the stuff in the perennial garden, but that's all I know so far.
Okay, Gordon.
Well, I mean, yeah, as far as my understanding of the memorandum was, I mean, I don't care about their updates on their other activities. The communication regarding the park specifically, like any, any plans or designs or changes, but I mean, it's beyond just general maintenance. They're supposed to be getting a motion from us approving it regardless.
Yes.
That always was the intent, and I don't know why that changed.
Well, it's, it's, we're supposed to, they, they and I are supposed to have an administrative meeting once a year towards the end of the year to, to hear their plans, give them some ideas and so forth, then they bring it to council. They have chosen not to go that way, so I'm taking myself out of the M O A and ask the council if they want to make any changes.
Well, and that was essentially the wording of it. But I mean, like the, the update, I mean, we weren't worried about what they were doing for the Christmas gala. Or I mean, that was all very separate unrelated things. So I, I'm just clarifying so we don't keep getting more muddled. It's, the two are very separate things. The one has a memorandum of agreement that is very clear, and they do need to run past changes with us. There are other activities if they wish to provide us information, they can or can't, that's up to them.
Hundred percent consecory, yeah. Yeah. They, they haven't asked for a administrative meeting, and that's fine. I've indicated to them that any changes they want to make with the park, they have to bring to council. Yeah. Basically the newest on that matter.
Okay.
Are they, sorry, are they looking for some kind of sign off on the things that they want for?
For the park? Well, I can, I can give you some context. The trees and flowers, I'm recommending to council, but no tree should be planted along that back alley because the power lines are there. The gazebo upgrade, I'm, I'm not sure what they want to do because that gazebo would donate a bar of spots. And I'm not comfortable right now with a sign being tacked onto it. All the netting was taken out of the windows. I'm not real happy about that. But they took it all out because people are parking inside there and doing whatever they do and smoking in there. They've asked us for an ashtray garbage can. We have that, but we're not putting it out right now. They want a light Thor, to which they wanted, they wanted the light coming off one of the light standards, a spotlight, so it was lit all the time. And I, I said to them, Fortis isn't going to allow that. There's no way that you want a spotlight across the street. And they said that solar lights wouldn't be enough. And I said, well, you know, bring that to council. The tourism signage, what they're after in this one is, it's like the blue signs you see when you're coming into Ladue where businesses can buy a spot on there, and they're not cheap. No. No, they're not. I think one sign, some of them are paid, what did we, what were we charging way back Cindy? After the, for advertising one of those blue signs in their chamber presence?
Oh, a lot.
It's a lot, it's a lot.
I remember being like shocked by the price.
About twelve hundred bucks? Yeah. So to have, they paid a thirty-five deposit, asked Alberta Transportation to send us options. Well, there is no options. It's a permit or no permit that they want to apply for. And they're not likely to hear back because we have nothing for tourism, in all honesty. We, if they wanted to put a blue sign up for advertising businesses, when transportation has already allowed that one sign to sit there now, without any issues. So, but they want those blue signs. And they want, they want to put a sign above Thor on our, their chamber sign. Well, I don't care what they do there. And at their sign at Glen Park at Highway seven seventy-eight, that's the one when you're coming off Glen Park to turn into Thor. They got the.
Well, but yeah, that's between them and the county, whatever the county sign regulations are.
Transportation, hundred percent, has nothing to do with us. Yeah. So it's just basically the one, the one that they want to put up closer to us, but still, it's a transportation permit along thirty-nine.
Yeah, like I say, that's a, I, I think you say, like the Thorsby Chamber back when I was there, we did look into it, and there was like a thing, it was a huge hassle, it was, you know, kind of a minimum number of things advertising there, and it was unfortunately expensive, and nobody knows, nobody had the appetite to spend the money back then, so I don't.
And they're not going to now. So I, I think what they're after is they want, kind of like when you go down towards Millitt, and you can see the sign on the highway that says White Barn or whatever it is at the wedding venue, that's the kind of sign they want. It took the White Barn almost six years to get a sign there. So thirty-five dollar deposit, you know.
We have actual safety issues at the crosswalk of the school, and how, how long have we beat our head against that brick wall?
Hundred percent, hundred percent. So that's their issue. They, they want to put up a tourism sign, and that's all between them, the county and Alberta Transportation. So really, it's the trees and flowers, gazebo, we can put ashtrays there beside that bitch, it's not a big deal. And the lighting for Thor, like I say, Fortis is not going to allow it. And for traffic safety, you don't want a spotlight coming across and wires and everything else. So, but I'm sure that's what they'll be asking council for.
Well, I guess I agree with the tree issue. I mean, what trees and roots and structure and power poles and all the rest, I mean, that's a bigger discussion. And if it's just a blanket, they're going to plant trees, well, then it's a no, because we need a lot more information.
Yeah.
But as far as the lighting, again, when they were talking about, I'm very hesitant to do anything that involves an ongoing power bill as well.
I agree.
So we have to be very hesitant as far as what are we doing? And does this ongoing monthly power bill justify the benefit? It's not as simple as put up a lot, so.
No, I agree. They didn't want to, they did put up to us at one time. I said, there's no way council could go for this. You pay for the power because we want power in Taylor Park.
I don't think that, I'd be hesitant at that because when they say we're not paying for it, we get stuck with the bill.
We always do.
Yeah.
Better not to happen.
Yeah.
They could put a, they could put a solar spotlight. They want, that's what they want. They're not even brushing off Thor, so I don't know why they want to light them up, but anyway.
So at, so at this time, it doesn't look like we have to reply to anything in here?
No, I think I've, I've indicated that we've received it, and any, I'll just indicate any changes at Taylor Park must come through council.
Okay.
Can I just move to some information?
On favor. Got you on that.
Perfect.
All right. Okay. Eight point two then. We're going to talk about the tax property sale.
Let us correct your worship. So as you know, we have secured a contract with Tax Services. And I'll just kind of go through this with you. I know you have that chance to really read it because it's just, it's not that it just come up today, but they wanted to make sure we had everything we needed for a meeting. Because we have two properties that are coming up for sale. We have five next year. So basically, what the Tax Services want from tonight is, A, we have to have a resolution for the public auction sale date and location. And we're indicating that it'd be on a Saturday at ten A M. here. They also want a regulation, a resolution, the terms and conditions of the sale. And the terms of the sale, the resolution, we have the resolutions written for you. Terms of the sale for the twenty twenty-five public auction are hereby approved. And the terms and conditions are behind this document. So the twenty twenty-four terms and conditions are parcel land offer for sale may be redeemed by payment of all asset arrears, penalties, or costs by guaranteed funds at any time until the property is declared sold. Each parcel land offer for sale be subject to a reserve bid entitled will be subject to the reservations and conditions contained in the existing certificate of title. Just to caveat this a little bit, costing of the parcel, and that will come later. This is just the conditions of the sale. Lands being offered for sale are on an as-is, where-is basis. The municipality makes no representation, gives no warranty whatsoever as to the state of the parcel, nor its suitability for any intended use by the bidder. Auctioneer counselors and chief administrative officer and the designated officers and employees of the municipality may not bid any parcel land offer for sale unless directed by the municipality to do so on behalf of the municipality. I will say that we have no intention of bidding as a municipality on these properties. Purchaser of the property will be responsible for the taxes. Utilities for the current year will be no adjustment to the date of sale. Purchaser will be required to execute a sale agreement in form and substance provided by the municipality. We'll have a lower drop that bill of sale. Successful purchaser must at the time of sale make payment in cash certified check or bank draft payable to the municipality as follows. The full purchase price, if it is ten thousand or less, or if the purchase price is greater than ten, the purchaser must provide a nonrefundable deposit in the amount of ten thousand. And the balance of the purchase price must be paid within twenty days of the sale. If the certified check or bank draft succeeds, the final purchase price excess will be refunded within a reasonable time. G S T will be collected, subject to risk of the property lies that the purchaser immediately followed in the auction. Purchaser is responsible for obtaining vacant possession. Purchaser is responsible for registration and transfer, including registration fees of land. If no offer is received on a property or if the reserve bid is not met, the property cannot be sold at the public auction. Municipality may after the public auction become the owner of any parcel land that is not sold. And once the property is declared sold at public auction, the previous owner has no further right to pay the tax arrears. And we will have a professional auctioneer doing this from the tax service because we don't want any mistakes. The third resolution is basically a resolution that see it resolved at the two and two five thirty-two on F B M G A. The addition of all tax recovery costs to the relevant roles, and the two roles are there, is hereby approved. So notice we don't identify anybody. So I'll stand for questions.
I'm assuming you got these terms from them and they're, what they're recommending, and I understand they do it on a Saturday. And generally speaking, if it was the nineteen nineties, I would agree with all this, but under seven, we're having the auction on a Saturday. Banks aren't open on a Saturday. Wait, if I, I'm not because I couldn't be allowed to, even if I wanted to in this case. But if I was just a guy who was showing up for the auction, it's a Saturday, and you want me to bid on a property, but you want me to have you a certified check or bank draft or cash as soon as the auction's done, but it's Saturday and the banks are closed, why can't we not do electronic funds transfers? Is that not legitimate enough?
No, not according to, we could, we can back it up, though. We just proposed March first, twenty twenty-four.
Back it up to February twenty.
I can back it up to February twenty-eighth.
Well, I guess my point is, if we're doing it on a Saturday, and I understand you're going to get better attendance on a Saturday, but like now you're making it so I can't bid on it because unless I'm walking around with ten grand cash in my pocket, what do you want me to do?
Yeah, that makes sense.
No, no, we put it there on a Saturday, and it's for discussion, so we.
Well, I, I agree with the Saturday, but I just feel like, I mean, shit, if I, here, I'll buy a grand property for forty grand, but I don't have forty grand cash in my pocket today. You know, I mean, it seems like we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. You're getting more people show up who have no ability to actually bid on it.
I guess if they want to buy it, they better show up with ten thousand dollars.
But that's stupid. I'm not going to go to the bank and preemptively go get a certified check or whatever. Like, that seems silly, and now the bank's closed, and you're going to be saying, where's my ten grand?
You bet. No, we could, we could make it on the twenty-eighth, and we could just amend this resolution.
Ideally, I'd say keep it on Saturday and find a way to accept payment in some way that's viable on a Saturday, but.
Well, most banks are open on Saturdays, but not at A T D here.
Which, I mean, realistically, if you have the auction here, the bank here is kind of got to be the one in question.
Yeah, it will be. So I have, I have no problem moving it to a Friday because it's, it's far out enough, subject to council, because it is your resolution.
Well, I say, it seems silly to me that there wouldn't be a reason, that there's a reason why we wouldn't be able to do like an E F T of some sort, though. Like, I mean.
No, according to them, with these tax sales, it has to be cash certified check, bank draft.
E F T is cash, it's immediate, it's irrevocable, it's, I don't know. I don't understand the distinction.
Yeah, I could double check and ask them, but.
Well, if, if we can't do E F T, then we kind of have to move the date, but I would just keep it on the Saturday, we'll allow electronic payment.
Yeah, and I don't think I can. And we have to kind of get them done because these properties have to be sold by March fifteenth.
I, I think they use these terms and conditions all the time for, for everybody. And I, I think, I think if they were allowed E F T, they would have put it in here, I'll be honest with you.
I was kind of surprised they didn't.
Yeah. I don't think they're, I don't, I better not make it, I better not make an assumption.
Like, if it's not, like, I could see them just being outdated, and nobody's thought to bother to ask the question, but there's actually a reason. I'd be very curious what the reason is because it seems arbitrary.
Because a lot of these, they have the letter of credit instead, and then they can just give them a.
That wouldn't be acceptable, would it?
Yeah. So.
Right, so you're really limiting the number of buyers that you have, even though you did it on a Saturday.
Right. So I don't know, but that's something I think maybe we could look at. If, I mean, you were saying to the chief.
Absolutely.
You take like all these, these big auctions, and you.
Oh, I spent a lot of money at auctions over the years, and I've never showed up with, you know, any cash, like.
Yeah. You have a letter of credit from the bank, and it says you blew up to fifty thousand or twenty, or whatever it is, and, and where you go. I have a feeling it's the M G A, I'll be honest with you. It would definitely affect.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Like I say, if that is the case, then we kind of shouldn't make it on a Saturday. We should really make it on a Friday if that's the case, so.
Yes. So Cindy, I have a question here. So you're saying here, there's, there's three properties, but.
There's two, but.
Pardon? Okay. But on the top, we've got a resolution with tax recovery process.
Oh, because I think originally Don thought there was three.
So it's only two then?
Yeah. Two this year and three five months.
You got two of those.
And one of these is the property that.
Raised the other day?
Yes.
So I want to buy a summer property by one next year.
Well, no, you can't. Oh, I guess, yeah, there you go.
More than likely, you will not get buyback or something.
That one, well, yeah, you just don't know.
Yeah, you're going to, how are you going to start with that one?
We were, we were looking at it today, because we were looking at the notes. Because in the file, like the vast file that we have, there's no information. But Cheryl found notes in the, in G P about how it was supposed to be demolished in two thousand and fifteen. For two thousand and fifteen, there was a demolition order issued, and then.
I know, I said there's a bunch of problems with that.
Then they put a stop order on it.
It was a weird, like, whoa, hang on, like, there's like nothing but problems.
Then they stopped it for some reason, but we don't know why because we can't find any.
I feel like because they got raised, the number of weird issues with their ad hoc weird approach to.
Yeah, I'm not sure why, but there was a stop order put on it. It was supposed to, it was boarded up. There hasn't been water, like utilities, charged on it since August thirty-first of two thousand and twelve. The meter's been removed.
The town didn't board it up?
Yeah, I don't know. They must have had to as part of the stop order, maybe.
I feel like, yes, someone personally boarded it up.
So, but the meter's been removed, and there literally has not been a utility bill since August thirty. Since the, who, like, whomever name it is in now took it over, they were never charged utilities.
That's weird.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
I didn't either until today, when I went to do all this stuff and was like, what do you mean this? Because I thought there's.
Well, it's like a weird, like nebulous, like nobody knows what's going on.
Yeah, and literally, the file has no information in it, other than a land title transfer, and then some drawings, and then Cheryl only found notes in G P. Like, there's, there's not even the utility file in the utility account.
Because it never has been built.
But there should have been from before.
Yes, yeah. Weird.
Yeah, it was just strange, like, the whole thing was odd.
Like a nebulous black hole, if you got like extra garbage or anything, you just throw it in there, it just disappears, and it just gets like a bottomless pit of, no one knows what happened to it.
Yeah, so I'm not sure. Because when I went to look, I'm like, oh, there must be arrears utilities, because I believe the owner is deceased.
But then I feel like whoever, like they got transferred, I feel like, like it, whoever the title is in now is not deceased.
Yes, he is, I think.
Oh, okay, I thought like it, I knew that whoever owned it was long gone, but that was a long time ago.
But I believe.
I thought the title transferred, I had heard from some, someone along the way, I thought.
In two thousand and twelve, they transferred.
I thought that they transferred to whoever, like, the heir was, and they just never really, like, dealt with it.
I don't know.
I don't know either, sure, but.
All the mail gets returned, like, anything we send comes back. They moved unknowing. The person squatting there keeps saying that this person is deceased. But this tax people are going to try and figure out if they are or are not.
I guess it doesn't really matter if they are or are not, right? I mean, they have, they have their opportunity, and if they don't come forward and do it, their property, then it's gone either way, yeah.
It's just interesting, like, that there's just no record, like, that we can't find anything.
What did you find, uh? M G A doesn't specify. I have a feeling it's just company's policy that that's how they want it, probably because they've had some issues in the past. I, I guess it depends what council wishes, if they, they want to stay to these terms of payment in cash, certified check or bank draft. It's all cash in a way, but.
And I guess that was my point, is like, an E F T is, is cash as much as a certified check is.
It just, I think, can't be paid at the time because sometimes it takes twenty-four hours to get an E F T.
Yeah, you have to pay it before you leave the E F T.
Sure, I guess my point is, on a Saturday, I'll be able to get you an E F T to clear far sooner than I'll be able to get a certified check.
But I won't see it in our bank until Monday, that's the thing, right?
I, I think they have to have everything there that.
I think we have to move to the Friday, though.
Yeah, and that's fine.
And if, if council is amenable to that, we can certainly, we can move that to the Friday, which is easy for us to do. And the, the, any assessments and all that, not assessments, but evaluations, that will come in a bit. And all the advertisement will come, so this is just the first stage. Okay. All right, so can I get a?
So.
I need three, three motions.
So I move that be it resolved. Council has set it the date and time of the public auction for tax rules, zero one zero four seven and zero one one seven four, be set from February twenty eighth at ten A M. at the Town of Thorsby Municipal Office, located at forty-nine seventeen Henkin Street, Thorsby, Alberta, T zero C two P zero, council chambers.
Thank you. All in favor? Carry. Resolution number two, be it resolved at pursuant to five three three subsection one F of the M G A, the Municipal Government Act, the addition of all tax recovery costs to the relevant rules being zero one zero four seven and zero one one seven four are hereby approved. You all in favor? Carry.
Thank you, your worship. So how we report to this company now is these resolutions, and then we do resolution numbers. So that's where we're headed. It's perfect. Appreciate that, thank you.
All right. But for next time, it'd be nice to know if the.
I'm going to ask him that question, though. I agree with you.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, like I said, I'm curious if there is a reason that I'm just not understanding, but.
Yeah, I may not be understanding it neither. I will ask him, Jeff. There you go.
Okay. Bylaw nine point one, fees and service bylaw, twenty twenty-four, first and second reading. Anything you want to comment on that before we go ahead and get that done? Uh, let me see. So this is, we've agreed it to, we've agreed because you've had your legal on that and everything. Yeah, so this is the way we're going to go on it.
We just, yeah, it's going to repeal any other uncertainty effect. We're only asking for first and second reading tonight, council. We haven't, we haven't done, I think this was given to council to take a look, make sure we're comfortable with it, and make sure you're comfortable with the administrative fees. We will give it another look before regular, in December, to make sure we have everything before third reading.
Okay, well, yeah, I move first reading of bylaw two zero two four zero eight.
You all in favor? Carry. I'll motion for second reading.
I'll make the second motion for second reading, bylaw number two zero two four zero eight.
You all in favor? And then it's carry. Okay, this is carry.
Boy, I'm glad you don't have to do this paperwork in the morning.
It really is, but still, yeah.
All right. Nine point two, S E S S, appeal bylaw twenty twenty-four oh nine. To repeal bylaw two thousand.
Oh, wasn't there, sorry, wasn't there a point two? Did we not?
Yeah, we did first and second, right?
Oh, eight, eight point two, didn't you got something that was eight point two?
Eight point two was a tax.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Sorry, I thought you had added something else.
No, 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 that was our, that was our tax, uh, tax sale. Okay, so, and we're repealing bylaw two zero zero seven oh four, F C S S. This is the third and final reading.
Uh, nope, this would be.
First and second.
First and second.
I thought so, too.
Okay, fair enough, I didn't see it in the R F D. Okay, no problem. Thank you. Third reading tonight, sir.
Okay, oh, yeah, I move third reading of bylaw two zero two four zero nine.
You all in favor? Carry. Okay. Nine point three, burning and fireworks bylaw, twenty twenty-four, ten second look. So just, I asked Dawn on this one here, we originally had the burning, and I thought, well, we might as well do the fireworks because that's a little attention to. You know, some people seem to be setting off whenever they want. And I, I think it's a good idea to combine the two.
I combined the two years.
We did your worship in part four, that'd be page sixty at the bottom, number five with seven at the bottom. So we took, we did want to make it four now. It's sorority, but we don't want folks to ignite, discharge, or set off fireworks in the library. This is a town sorority without prior written permission, staff at the chief administrative officer. So if you want to have a party, a backyard party, just let us know. We'll provide a submit. Read permission for use of fireworks may only be granted if the applicant applies, complies with all applicable provincial federal regulations. In other words, it's not back alley fireworks. Fireworks displayed in locations deemed safe and appropriate, not in your backyard or in your neighbor's yards. Fire ban or fire restriction is not in effect at the time of the planned fireworks display. And during fire ban or restriction, no fireworks shall be discharged regardless of any prior permission. And unauthorized use of fireworks may result in confiscation, fines, or further enforcement. I'd like to, just on C, I didn't catch this just, but based on council's discussion, if I may, I'd like to strike out per Ladue County guidelines.
And that's kind of my question is, what are we doing? Are we doing Ladue County or are we doing us?
We're doing us.
I feel like it's better if we do us, but like, whichever way it is, it needs to be clear because it's always a matter of confusion.
It is, it is, and I didn't catch this when I read it. So we'll strike as per Ladue County guidelines because this will be up. So we'll strike as per Ladue County guidelines and insert as per Town of Thorsby guidelines. That would be, and the only change there is on the, on page sixty-two of sixty-eight, part four. Just by penalty option, unauthorized discharge of use of fireworks, hundred fifty first, three hundred, six hundred. Obstructing a peace officer with respect to this bylaw, add fireworks, ten thousand all the way, and that, that's standard under the M G A. And obstructing an unauthorized official, i.e. fire, fire marshal, et cetera, that's also ten thousand. So that's, that's part of the M G A. Our specific penalty for the town is one fifty-three and six.
You never hear the six months prison actually happening, but says it every time.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else in there?
Other than the fire, other than the change in the bylaws, name to burning and fireworks bylaw, your worship.
Yeah.
And let's see, did we, Jesse, these, this background, we've added more definitions, am I correct on that?
I understand.
Okay. So the, the definitions, we definitely wanted to, based on council's information under the R F D, unseasoned wood, any wood with a moisture content of over twenty percent that's not been properly dried. So lumber means wood that's been processed or on or shaped, that's pretty well given. Blue means an adhesive substance used to bond materials together. And for the purposes of the bylaw, blue includes substances that are these harmful fumes or residues when burned. Resin means a natural or synthetic substance, often sticky or solid, that's used in adhesive coatings of plastics and its purposes of burning, it's to reduce toxic fumes. Garbage, of course, means waste material or refuse or discarded items of any kind, including but not limited to household waste, food scraps, packaging, and other non-combustible, non-organic material. In other words, people can't burn their orange peelings and all that in the, in the garbage pit. Plastic means any synthetic material made from polymers, including but not limited to packaged containers, all that plastic stuff you get sandwiches and so forth. And manure means animal waste, including feces, bedding material used to produce livestock or livestock there. Carcass means the body or remains of a dead animal, including but not limited to livestock, like for domestic animals, but can't burn your cat.
And no, no home cremations?
No home cremation, no. Household refuse, of course, waste materials generated from residential activities, so food scraps, et cetera. Used oil, so that's pretty standard, you can't change your oil in your car and then just use it to start the fire or burn it a little longer. Yard waste, all your, all your weeds and grasses and grass clippings and all sorts of things you can't burn at the carpet. Of course, definition of Ladue County, which is standard, and, because we've done that before. And fireworks means in explosive device or material designed to produce visual or auditory effects through combustion, detonation, explosion, included but not limited to firecrackers, own candle rockets, and, wow. We renamed the bylaw to burning and fireworks bylaw. Part three, section eight, has been aligned to, has been updated to a lot of the county's calling it fire bans. We will strike part three of that, because we're going to create our own. New part four has been added to regulate the safe use of fireworks, and that's what we just discussed or read out. And so basically, we're just, we're allowing people to have fireworks, we're positively allowing fireworks. Uh, new part four has been added to regulate state law for use, uh, use of fireworks, and that's what we just discussed or read out. And so, basically, we're just, we're allowing people to have fireworks, we're positive level of fun, but, uh, let's, let's, uh, smarten up about it. This also gives the fire inspector and the fire marshal with Liddoo County, uh, some powers in here too, if we need them, because sometimes the fines are heavier under, um, under the fire code than they are under a bylaw. So, they can, they can, they have the choice between the bylaws, that's what comes with the fire code.
The right to access and stuff is pretty lenient in that regard for them as well.
Yeah, they can walk into your yard, go, what are you doing?
Yeah, whereas we have to kinda make sure of being a little more discretionary.
That's correct. That is correct, yeah. So, that's, that's our, uh, that's our, um, information with respect to, with respect to this bylaw. The definition part is long on purpose.
So, you did get eight two, uh, declared by Liddoo County, we did, they were changing that?
Yes, the county actually had a hand in this, they helped us write it.
Yeah, but during a fire restriction declared by Liddoo County, we were changing that to town?
Oh, yes.
I just, I just figured we had covered that one, the things that were changing.
Uh, no, but, uh, fire ban has been declared by Liddoo County, yeah, um...
Yeah, I don't care which it is, we just have to be consistent, actually, quit me out.
No, no, change it to Town of Thorsby, both eight one eight two.
So, it hasn't been a fire ban since I've lived here where there wasn't confusion, so...
No, we're, we're, uh, I, I like started discussion from the last one. Uh, deemed affect, uh, section three, uh, change that to Town of Thorsby, please, clerk? Yeah, yeah. I just gotta tell you that in real time for the thing. Uh, okay, I think we've got it. Yeah, and we'll double check on those to make sure it says Thorsby, not with a kind of a double check on that. You still wanna do first and second today? Uh, yes, we can do first with the changes and second, and then we'll wait till regular, next regular.
Yeah, I can move first reading of bylaw two zero two four dash ten, amended, as discussed.
You all in favor? And second reading?
I'll make the motion for that.
You all in favor? Perfect, thank you. Uh, nine point four, Christmas season holiday policy. Your worship, we have changed this policy to make it a lot simpler than this floating a, a rule we've been under since two thousand, uh, which was, didn't make any sense to the CFO and I. And it, uh, so we created a new policy that's simpler, and basically what we're saying is this under the guidelines on, uh, page sixty five of your package. No matter the calendar days of Christmas and New Year's, the fall in will be time off allotted to all Town of Thorsby staff with pay when Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve fall are workday. Christmas Eve employees, employees will finish their shifts at twelve noon, working a half day. New Year's Eve employees will finish their shifts at twelve noon, working a half day. When Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve fall on a weekend, a half day will be observed on the preceding Friday. Uh, it, it's the same amount of hours and so forth, like, it, it's not adding hours or adding pay. But it was driving us nuts because we had to look, like, for example, this year, when it's Christmas Day, it's...
It's a Wednesday?
A Wednesday, I think, so Christmas Day is a Wednesday, according to your policy, the floating day off will be Friday, December twenty seventh. So, it's, it's the weirdest policy I've ever seen, I've never seen a policy...
And then they have to work until four thirty on Christmas Eve, and nobody wants to work after that.
Scise after the year.
You didn't have this kind of policy before, so can you win a bowl?
Bowl furnace is going down on Christmas Eve.
They don't fail, it's, yeah, it's gonna break, that's when, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, a lot of, a lot of this, um, floating day for Christmas season, a lot of that's going out by the wayside. There's very few communities that are using that, and we just thought, just give them a half day off, it doesn't change anything, doesn't change your administrative, it's just simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's all this is.
This is an administrator policy, do we need to...
I think it's a half, but that's closing.
Has to do with that closing, we'll need a resolution, yeah. Okay, any other comment on it? Nope. Motion to, uh, that the old floating days policy two thousand three or five be extended and policy eight AM H R one twenty four be approved?
Oh, in the motion?
Uh, all in favor? Carry. Thank you. That's a carry. All right, uh, moving right along here, eleven point one, the variance was for October.
I have a pretty good actually.
Need to report.
I mean, to get it open, give me a... So, thank you. Um, so, we're actually pretty in line with last year as far as, uh, where we're at. We're at ninety-eight and a half percent of income as compared to a hundred and one point three six percent of last year. And then expenses, we are at seventy-two point one six percent compared to seventy-eight point three four of last, last year. So, I haven't spent as much money. Yeah.
I was just curious, for under green spaces, it's like this six thousand versus three thousand. What is this revenue that we're missing with three thousand dollars in revenue, what, whatever we're looking there?
Um, we have to build cemeteries for there.
Okay. Oh, yeah, exactly, very good, it's all like internal revenue, it's like we're getting some weird grant or something for green spaces.
No, no, so, part of that is cemetery, like, uh, selling plots, like materials. And then we still have to build a, the cemetery, or the, not the cemetery, we have to build a church.
Okay, that's fine, I really, I was confused, we were like, say, waiting on a grant or something, or, okay.
We'll do that at the end of this year.
Yeah, that's fine, I just have more curiosity than anything.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions on the variance point from anybody? Okay, uh, motion to accept the variance point from, as provided?
Oh, in the motion?
Uh, all in favor? Carry.
What, the variance report?
That's actually a real variance report.
It takes me forever to do it, so I...
Having that, like, the comparables on the side is nice, saves me from putting back and forth.
Well, yeah, and then at least you can see where we are compared to last year, right?
Yeah, otherwise, like I say, I'm trying to, like, reference other things and it's back and forth and...
Okay, well, um, public commerce, I only see one guy back there. Do you have anything to say?
I didn't bring my backup crumbstone. I don't know if you have this or not, uh, this is just, uh, more curiosity than you know. So, the latest break you guys filled in was cement? How many yards was that, you know?
Oh, you mean cement, that, into this latest month?
Yeah, 'cause that was pretty big, that was a pretty deep hole.
Yeah, it was, uh, one and three quarter truckload, but I don't have the actual meters, that was a very deep hole. Um, I can get that to you once I get there.
No, I just, I just, 'cause I know the cost of cement, so I just go, wow.
Yeah, I just, I, like, I didn't know that, yeah, like, we, we backfilled with cement?
Highways engineering, we have no choice.
Was another one that filled as well was cement? Was cement?
Yeah. That night, that's why you didn't see it, you went to bed, we snuck it in.
Like, I could see a certain amount, or is it like the whole thing?
Well, up to a certain...
That might have been a half a hole, great.
That's a lot of cement, yeah, wow.
Yeah.
I did not know we were doing that, that's crazy.
Yeah, yeah. And when I was there on Monday, I mean, you could still see it was still wet, like, it was still, like, watery at the top there.
Of course it would be, yeah.
Yeah, that's why we left the, the traffic pattern to do it the same thing today, so we wouldn't have anybody driving on it. But it's set, it's set by tonight, so it's all recovered, so... Yeah, it's annoying, uh, highway demand, you do it that way and we're stuck paying for it.
Oh, I did not, I did not know that at all, that's brutal.
It is brutal. It is brutal because they also have to dictate the consistency of the permacrete that goes in there.
Well, but then, we also, I mean, if you're ever gonna deal with the utilities, you gotta deal with that then. Should have been a huge expense now and a huge expense later.
That is correct, Councilor Corey.
Oh, if you have a break, three feet outside of that.
Well, we're hoping the next break is four powerful down.
We've already counted.
We've already counted.
I'm like, but after December thirty first, please.
Uh, at least this break, we didn't have to fit a new piece of pipe in, we just had to put the collar on, the patch collar, so that helped. Uh, I was kinda concerned, uh, because the Saturday, after we left here from Bajit, um, I phoned Andrew about six, and he was here already, because what happened was, uh, Dave walked into the water treatment plant just to check, as he always does from home, and then, uh-oh, the sewage lift station is running at high capacity. And he kinda started looking, and the alarm hasn't gone off yet in the, in the water treatment plant, uh, or the, uh, lift station, but he went, this is not, this...
Yeah, it's obvious, yeah.
That there's something wrong, so Andrew was almost home, phoned him, come back, and he and Casey and Dave worked till midnight, and they could not find exactly where the break is, they had it isolated from the, um, art spa parking lot this way. But, of course, that whole side, uh, they couldn't get the valve to shut as, as usual, and they weren't sure what valve was gonna work. So, what, uh, what Dave did is he said, if we can, right now it's flowing at ten liters per second, he was happy with that, and it wasn't flowing onto the street, it was catching the, uh, the sewer line, right, the storm sewer line. So, they left it, and then they had CB Maxx come out at, at, uh, the morning, running an all-night job, 'cause they weren't finding it, and, and you get hurt stupid at two in the morning, so, um, anyway, they were acceptable to the flow. So, CB Maxx, when they got here, there was another hour and fifteen or twenty minutes roughly before they could really isolate it. Once they figured out it was in the intersection, then it was just a case of using their, their equipment to, to, to pin it, and of course, right in the sand, well, basically right in the center of the intersection, so, um, then it took them about five hours to dig that hole. It was so, for the, you could tell when I was looking inside, the bucket marks are little bucket marks, they're not big, they're just like...
It's so marshy there, it'd be so wet, and there was no snow cover when it got cold.
Yeah, totally frozen.
Yeah, it, it really would be.
Yeah, so, Monday night, um, what they did was they put gravel underneath the pipe, and then they covered it with a bunch of sand to isolate it. Uh, the schools were in touch with us constantly, the school board division, and, and they were, they were really good about hanging on. Uh, the maps were good on the website and on Facebook, there was no problem, uh, CPO Deon was there. No problem with traffic, because we gave buses traffic priority, there was nobody pushing and shoving and honking horns and all that kinda stuff, it was good. We forced all the kids to come across at the lights, and they said, well, we can cross to the other side, it's safe. I said, to the superintendent, uh, I said, absolutely not, because we've got equipment there, we got guys there, and I can't, we can't determine if, oh, who's gonna run across. Deon reported, there was no kids, nobody went across that other side of the crosswalk, I guess the superintendent, the principal was laid right into them. Um, and, uh, as a, as a note, the superintendent said to the schools, look, these guys have been up thirty-six hours already trying to find this, so you can have your school, uh, on, on Monday morning, so we got a nice bouquet from, uh, for the crews, not, not from the administration, but the crews deserve it, so... Kept in touch, um, I spent my thirtieth anniversary typing stuff on Facebook.
Texting me and making me depressed.
Definitely, so... Is it a good thing it's stolen this year, or is it...
No, it's not a good thing.
It's not a good thing? This is gonna be an expensive one.
And, um, and I think...
No, they're gonna keep coming, though, if it starts going this way.
I think we were, like, I think we were at eighty, what, right?
Eighty-five, yeah.
For block breaks already, and we're about two hundred, so I think we're gonna be...
You're gonna be over.
We're gonna be dipping into our contingency fund.
Yeah, it's like fifty-fourth all over again, there, we start having this series of breaks, and the one disturbance, and it, it, it's gonna spiral, and next year's gonna be nothing but as well, we're gonna...
Once you pressure them up, and they've been broken, once you pressure them up again, they're gonna find another week.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's gonna just be one after the next, and we're gonna end up replacing it six months at a time if we're not careful here.
Yeah, and on, on the water breaks, I can update you on select engineering has, uh, said, no problem, they run a scenario that one block at a time, we can beat some shallows on, on fifty-third.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have no problem with that. Um, I have...
At least, I mean, people can see there's something happening at least, and they can understand why it takes time, when they can, when they see us doing nothing, when they don't, but when there's actually, you know, an excavator digging up a road and putting pipes in the ground, they can understand that there is something in the process.
Yeah, absolutely, have no problem with that, and then, I've been gathering all the CCTV camera stuff, it's all over the place, that's, you gotta find it from everywhere. But, uh, I told them, I said, every piece of CCTV camera we have here, uh, there's some that Select has all that they've done, and it's really easy to find their stuff, but there's camera stuff all over the place that is absolutely really not labeled, but they'll recognize it, that's what Justin told me, said, we'll recognize it, said, there's every piece of camera stuff you have, so, I'm gathering a huge file of that stuff so they can see. I think there's some on, some on fifty-third, but I don't think that thing's with cameras, so, uh...
They did go through everything in, what, twenty...
Twenty, was it all cameras in twenty seventeen?
Everything.
Okay, so it's where it was stored is my headache, um, but anyways, that's what I'm doing.
Then wouldn't they have it if it was held there?
Somewhere.
Well, I used to have it somewhere, I'd be able to find it for you.
Okay, that would be terrific. That would be terrific.
I don't remember where the hell it is.
Yeah. Yes, that's my problem. So, anyway, I'm just sending them everything, and I said, you guys can look through it, don't charge us. They just laughed, they said, no, we'll, we'll piece it through, so, I had to give them to send me their big Dropbox file, because there's no way L S D U is, is gonna go. But some of it, we videoed here too, you could tell that it's not professionally done.
Oh.
Yeah. So, anyway, I'll just send them everything we got, but they, they have no problem, uh, chipping it up for us, so...
I think it was Ibis, I don't know, like, the town didn't have Select do it, they don't have the town have Ibis do it, and like, we directly hired them. I'm, I'm almost certain it was Ibis, and they probably have a copy for you.
You know what, that's a good point, that's, that's a great point.
I'm certain it was Ibis.
I'll chase that down.
And, yeah, I'm, I'm very confident they went through everything.
Yeah, they could send us over a file, go to ship all that, plus whatever we got, and that's good.
Yeah, and if they want a billion thirty bucks for a hard drive to stick it on or something, so be it, but it's, they don't, like, we should have the whole, the whole works of it.
Okay, I'll get on them. Perfect, that's good, that's a good lead. Awesome, so there's, there's that update for that, and, uh, um, we would get nice remarks about the boulevard. Um, a couple of folks that, uh, work for Community of Bloom have said they love the boulevard, that would be Rod and Ainwee, uh, Ainwee? Yeah, Rod Blair, they love it, looks neat, tidy, they're happy with it. Um, so we've been, nobody's been really complaining about it.
Oh, that's from here.
I know. I know.
I think they put her on your desk on purpose, Eric.
He did. Poke the bear.
Well, it's like, it wouldn't have gotten to me otherwise, you know, the whole blocking.
Yes, it is.
Oh, did you block her too?
Long ago.
Yeah.
I did them both at the same time, they were both, both the same day.
We'll give you a little, we thought we'd give you a little taste.
Do I move what, this email?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it came today.
Blocked online, like, I wouldn't have seen it, yes.
Yeah, so, anyways, there's that, and then, I'm thinking, uh, I think at the end of this week, I think Alex is trying to get here this week to start ripping down that old water treatment plant, so...
Alex, you figure he was taking one for that?
How long does he figure? Um, well, he's got enough silly things to just about fill that reservoir, 'cause everything for the boulevard and a bunch of other stuff that sit down in a big pile. Uh, and we have extra old dirt and stuff and cement things we can shove down there. I think it's gonna be about a two, three day job.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
I thought it'd take longer than that.
Well, it all depends, uh, how he wants to lift up, like, if you look inside there, like, the whole reservoir's open, all stop cups are open, right? All the pumps and valves going across, all that's open underneath, so, um, I'm not sure if he's just gonna grab it. Once he gets the roof off of that, he's gonna take another assessment, gets all the, the blocks down.
Yeah.
And then he'll take an assessment of, of the thing, but I think just wrapping some of that stuff around a big boom or something, cracking it up, I'm not sure. So, but, uh, I'll go down there, watch and see what he's up to. He has assured us eighty-five dollars a ton for scrap.
Seems pretty good.
Yeah, very reasonable, yeah.
Does environment have to be called to when they're filling?
No, it's a, it's an outdoor demo, and because it's cold out, um, if there's, uh, any asbestos in the plant, um, uh, outside cold kills the spores, and we can always wet it down if we have to, so we're good. Thankfully.
You mean, like mold, not asbestos as far as spores, but, yeah.
Yeah, mold and stuff, yeah, we can wet it down, yeah.
I was just, um, along my lines, I just, I came up, Kevin, if you, even if you just snapped a few pictures of what was going into there, what the other problems you guys have been having in town, what's here, what's there, what's been burning, what has and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is the fill, what is going in the hole, yeah.
We will, definitely, yeah, we do with all these projects, we take pictures, a hundred percent, um, 'cause you just, you just never know.
Yeah, so we're gonna take it up to do something else there and say, what the hell were they thinking of?
Yeah, I don't even know what, I don't even know what the old reservoir, there was an old reservoir inside that called storage bin, wasn't it? And that called storage console, was there a reservoir underneath, 'cause that's filled in.
I don't know, but they should come back.
It was an old slew is what it was.
Oh, is that what that...
Oh, yeah, yeah, there was, there was a farm there at one time.
Oh, that's what they filled in inside there then?
Yep.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Before the, before the rink here, uh, the old, their rink was built, they used to go down there, kids used to go down there to skate.
Ah, so do you know, your worship, what they filled that one with? Probably best we don't ask.
Uh, probably maybe Roseanne Rose, where she's there, might know.
She might.
She might know.
She might know.
And she's the first house on that street, wasn't she?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, next time I see her, I'll ask her.
She might know.
She might know, good point. She might know, good point. So, yes, we, we have, uh, we have a documented picture, I'll show it to council and that, and, and to the public as well, um, what it is, so. So it'll be mostly dirt, rocks, cement pieces. Uh, there's, there's no, um, we looked up the rink, there's no environment requirement for what you put in there. Granted, there's not gonna be laws and all that kind of stuff with it, because Alex took all the trees home to his place. So, um, we near roast on New Year's Eve, it's open, um, so it'll be, we'll probably have to fill a lot of it with dirt. We've got a lot of loan too, yeah, I think we got, we pretty much got all that loan used up down there, um, but I think we've saved enough back, we have to put a bunch in to that, uh, more. And then we'll settle it, probably have to put some more in in the spring to make sure it's all settled and leveled and gravelled, we'll gravel it, and amen, done. Again, I'm gonna fail for public record, it should have been decommissioned, sorry, it shouldn't have crossed the line here. It should never have been left this long, because it never truly was decommissioned. If you're gonna have a grant to commission a plant, that grant has to also include that decommissioning of the old plant.
Oh, I was shocked years ago, we went for like a little tour of random town stuff, and I was shocked that there was still utilities to it. Why, like, I get, we're not paying a utility bill, like, we're not using utilities, but like, why, there's still a meter, we're still getting an administrative fee, like, what the hell is going on here?
Yeah.
I don't know how, like, for years, we would have been getting our, you know, that kind of base fee.
No, there was no fee for that.
For, because actively got it shut off not that long ago, though.
Yeah.
There was phone lines, there was power meter, there was gas meter, like, there was, there's still like services for like a long time.
And we, and they never, they never thought to cap off the gas pipeline.
But that's like, I guess, my question, like, why would you, like, why would you not have to, like, if you're, clearly the building was getting locked, it was never getting used again. Why would you have not gotten rid of the services, because like I say, there are at least a monthly ongoing cost if nothing else.
Well, I agree, it also becomes dangerous if you think they're gone and they're not. We're lucky, in all honesty, with the equipment we have moving across there and forward with all our stuff, that they throw stuff down there for us, or for them now.
Yeah.
Yeah, poles and, and, you know, insulators and all that sort of thing. So it just, it, it, it didn't sit well with me, I was, I was kinda cranky, because now we're spent paying for the destruction of that, the decommissioning. We, fifteen hundred bucks to close the line with that goal, like, it's just, to me, it's just unconscionable, I have no problem saying that publicly, it's just unconscionable.
Cover when they, yeah, under the grant, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Here, we're damn, we're finally done paying for the adventure, and we're still finding costs that never got captured.
I know, I know, at least this will be done soon and, and, and I'll take it care of, so, which is, it's annoying to me, uh, professionally, I'll say it that way. Alright, uh, anything else? Uh, no, not from, not from administration's perspective, um.
Do you guys wanna take, uh, we've got a very short, um, camera, you wanna take five or ten minutes, or no?
That works.
That works. Good.
Okay.
Alright, well, let's, uh, make a motion to, uh, I guess last, uh, to leave unfortunately, you know, it came back there.
You're the end there.
We talk mine right now, but.
Uh, motion to move the camera.
Yes, sir, if we go into camera.
On favor. You're welcome, thanks for coming, Kevin.
Thanks.
Is there a recent?
Yeah, I was just saying, just get me to it.
Oh, I thought we were having.
PCs in North Scotia.
PCs?
That's shocking. Well, the, the lines of the, that's going on?
Yeah.
PC's got it.